Good evening, if I could have everyone's attention, please. Welcome to our Henry County Board of Commissioners Tuesday, June 25th, 2024, regular scheduled board meeting. We're going to begin our meeting as always with our invocation and pledge of allegiance. We'll have Pastor Leonard Himes of Henry County to please come forward. And I'd like to ask everyone to stand, please.
Good evening, let's pray, Father, we come to the end of the night. Lord, the midst of this summer, we have many things to do. And, Lord, within our county, we pray your hand to be upon us. Our leadership and all those that daily sacrifice and work and labor and lead. We ask you to bless them and their families. And, Lord, tonight in this meeting, we ask you to show yourself to us that you would lead and that everything would be done decently and in order. Blessed this time tonight, we ask in Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you, you may be seated.
I'd like to officially call our meeting to order. We'll begin with our consent agenda. If I have our county manager, Sherri Matthews, to please come forward.
Good evening, Madam Chair, Vice Chair, and members of the board. This is your consent agenda for Tuesday, June 25th, 6:30 PM. Under the courts, we have a resolution accepting a grant award in the amount of $97,792 from the State of Georgia Office of the Governor Criminal Justice Coordinating Council to fund the Henry County Misdemeanor DUI Drug Court. We also have a resolution approving expenditure of drug abuse treatment and education funds, date funds, for the purpose of supporting the Henry County Misdemeanor DUI Drug Court. Under Juvenile Mental Health Court, we have a resolution accepting grant award in the amount of $24,060 from the State of Georgia Office of the Governor Criminal Justice Coordinating Council, CJCC, to fund the Henry County Juvenile Mental Health Court. Also, under Juvenile Court, Juvenile Justice Incentive Grant, we have a resolution accepting a grant award in the amount of $130,000 from the Criminal Justice Coordinating Council to fund functional family therapy during FY '25. Under the Henry County Fire and Rescue, we have a resolution of the Board of Commissioners authorizing Henry County to enter into an automated, automatic mutual aid agreement with Butts County, Georgia. We also have a resolution of the Board of Commissioners reappointing Assistant Chief Sam Polk to the Region Four West Georgia Emergency Medical Services at Advisory Council. Under Planning and Zoning, we have a resolution approving a request for a new streetlight district for Fernhurst subdivision on Willow Lane Road located in District Four. Under the Police Department, we have a resolution approving a request to award bid number 24-41 to Great South Harley-Davidson to purchase six 2024 Harley-Davidson FLHTP police motorcycles for $221,615 utilizing Red Speed funds. Under SPOS, we have a resolution approving the Georgia Power Utility Relocation Estimated Costs for Flipping Road Extension utilizing SPOS V funds in the amount of $139,204. We also have a resolution approving RFQ number 24-34 for the design of Mill Road Widening to Trans Systems Corporations in the amount of $742,000. Funding is available in the amount of $600,000 from the Atlanta Regional Commission, ARC, and $150,000 from the Department of Transportation Budget. We also have a resolution approving the Georgia Power Utility Relocation Estimated Costs for McDonough Extension in the amount of $417,169. We also have a resolution approving a budget amendment in the amount of $558,779 and a bid award for the resurfacing of various county roads to Blunt Construction Company, Inc., in the amount of $5,105,941. Funding for this budget amendment is available in the SPOS III account and DOT fund balance. Madam Chair, this ends the consent agenda.
Are there any questions from the board? Here and now, can I get a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Got a motion and a second. No discussion, all in favor? Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next item on the agenda is transportation planning. If we could have our transportation planning director, Sam Wilson, come forward. Sam Baker.
Good evening, Madam Chair and Henry County Board of Commissioners. I'm very pleased to let you know that Henry County has been awarded a very selective federal discretionary grant by the U.S. Department of Transportation. This grant is called SMART Grant, SMART which stands for Strengthening Mobility and Revolutionizing Transportation, in the amount of $825,000. This is not the first time we got this grant. We tried it once, two years ago, and we were turned down. We tried it again, and the second time, we won it. Over 321 communities nationwide applied for this grant, and only 34 communities were awarded. And Henry County is one of those 34. We are the only community in the state of Georgia that is a recipient of this grant. Now, we plan to use this SMART Grant to deploy and test connected vehicle technology. Now, what is connected vehicle technology? This is technology that allows a car to send a signal to a traffic light and change it from red to green, and thus allow a vehicle to pass through a highly busy intersection faster. So, to date, for this technology to work, you need two pieces of equipment. One is called a roadside unit installed at a road intersection. And the second piece of equipment is called an onboard unit installed inside or on top of a vehicle. The onboard unit can send a signal to the roadside unit to change the light from red to green. To date, we have 32 roadside units deployed at 32 very busy intersections in Henry County. And we have installed onboard units in 45 of Henry County Fire Department's emergency response vehicles. Using this SMART Grant, we are going to activate this connected vehicle technology system and test it. Our expectation is, as a result of deployment of this technology, our, we're going to save some time in responding to emergencies. But we want to, want confirmation of that, not just for our information, but also to make a case to the U.S. Department of Transportation that, yes, we are getting some benefit out of this connected vehicle technology in emergency vehicle response time reduction. So, we are going to collect data, analyze data, and report showing that we are getting some benefits. And so, that is one part. We plan to upgrade our equipment from older DSRC technology equipment to more emerging technology, CV, to X equipment. And the third component is, we are going to develop the first ever connected vehicle technology deployment plan in the state of Georgia using this grant. So, and the good thing is, this grant requires no local match. So, staff suggest that you approve the resolution accepting this grant. I'll be happy to answer any questions you might have.
Are there any questions from the board? Okay. So, this was being used in our emergency vehicles?
It is focused on emergency vehicle preemption for Henry County Fire Department's emergency response vehicles. Now, the plan that we're going to come up with, we plan, our intention is to extend, expand it to Henry County transit vehicles for them to get to their destinations quicker and make it more competitive. And the, that plan will come up with how to expand this technology beyond the prototype to expand it to entire Henry County. I foresee having this technology deployed at every major road intersection in the county, which are classified collector's streets and above. So, that is, if we can get additional funding down the road, where we will install this technology so that the entire Henry County can take advantage of this connected vehicle technology down the road.
Awesome, thank you. Great job, Sam.
Thank you.
No other questions from the board? Can I get a motion to approve?
Motion. Second.
We've got a motion and a second. All in favor? Motion carries. Thank you, Sam. Next item on the agenda, I have our county manager come back to talk about honorary naming of county facilities.
Good evening again, Chair and Vice Chair and members of the board. I am returning this evening to bring forth a resolution, hopefully for approval, in regards to the honorary naming of our county facility structures and roads policy. Over the last couple of weeks, you all have provided some additional comments to my team in terms of what this policy will look like. And so, this evening, you have two options that are being presented based on feedback that I've received from a majority of the commissioners, and specifically how we will create a policy for not only the naming of roads and facilities, but the honorary markers. So, the difference between the two options, obviously, option number one, the county covers all of the costs from the legal organ to the signage, and it would be the same for the road naming. The county covers the costs within the legal organ and then any type of standard signage. The difference here is that for decorative signing, signage outside of what we do in-house, this option would be passed on to the applicant to cover the cost. Option two, the only difference in option one and option two is the standard signage for the honorary road naming, which would be our standard in-house sign shop, fabricating the signage, would be covered by the county, but all other costs would be covered by the applicant. One of the other changes in the document is it no longer requires a unanimous vote before the board. It has to be a majority vote, which is how all of our voting actions occur. And so, the new language removes any reference to a unanimous vote and speaks specifically to a majority. Additionally, and I don't think we covered it in the policy, but one question that was raised specifically was if we had a sponsor who wanted to actually come in and pay to have the naming rights of a facility. This policy would not prohibit that. That would be an action that's required and approval required from the Board of Commissioners. So, this evening, I am presenting to you all, again, a policy for honorary naming and honorary renaming of roads, structures, and facilities. And again, these are just honorary markers. So, for example, the Henry County Administration Building is called the Henry County Administration Building. If the board elects to place an honorary marker on the building, that is what this policy will do. It does not rename the building. It is just a marker honoring an individual for his or her services. I also believe that there was some conversation regarding the timeline for the deceased. I think we have changed that to the honoree shall have been deceased at least two years preceding the date of the application. Again, that is something that if the board wants to change, then we can certainly change it. But I did not receive any specific feedback on changing that provision. And I believe that was one additional question that came up during the last meeting. So, at this time, I will pause for any questions, comments, and/or a motion to accept either option one or option two.
So, I do have a question. And what was the last comment you mean, you made about they have to be deceased?
Yes, ma'am. So, the current policy indicates that the honoree shall have been deceased at least two years preceding the date of the application.
So, so what if you have a situation where you have someone maybe that retired or maybe was a commissioner or something maybe long ago that still may be living? How will we treat that?
So, the way that it is currently written, it does not speak to individuals that are currently alive. That can certainly be, we have one, two, five criteria. If we want to indicate that two of the five must be applicable, we can certainly do that, or we can remove the deceased in its entirety. What we've tried to do is pull from other jurisdictions, and they have similar provisions in place. But that's certainly something if the board wants to consider, we can consider. What we don't want is to have a influx of requests honoring everyone for every great thing that they're doing, and we just have requests after requests after requests. And so, we tried to put some stipulations in there. I certainly don't think that there's any issues outside of, because I know sometimes it may just be a student, or I know we've honored individuals for golfing, our high school athletes. And so, we put language in here to indicate that, but currently, it does say that you have to be deceased at least two years. So, that can certainly, if we are looking at an applicant who is deceased, then I think that provision would prevail, but the other four would have to be in place as well, if that makes sense.
Okay. Any questions from, from the board? Commissioner Wilson, any? Commissioner, and the only reason that I asked about if they were living, and I'm just gonna give you an example, and don't, don't anybody hold this to me. But, you know, we've had a long-serving commissioner that is, is, say, you know, still living. And I think about Andy Calhoun, who was a long-serving commissioner back in the day. And so, you know, what if something was to come available and we wanted to do an honorary something for him? So, pretty much have to wait till people die to honor them? And so, I don't know, I guess basically, to really talk about, like, they contributed or done something, you know, in other words, they have really been a pillar in the community that warrants this recognition, if that makes sense. So, Commissioner Robinson?
Thanks, Madam Chair. Madam, county manager, is this, can this be something at the discretion of the Board of Commissioners to be able to do that if we can put a clause to that can take place? Because the Board of Commissioners can always override whatever is there, but it has to become brought to, you know, the public, and then, is that something we can do?
So, if the policy is approved this way, then we'll have to specify that the Board of Commissioners shall have the authority to review applications that don't meet the criteria.
So, you cannot add that?
We can certainly add that, or we can add that any deceased honoree shall meet criterias C and D. So, in the event that you have an application for someone who is deceased, then they at least have to meet, have played a leadership role in the community, and shall have a substantial and positive contribution that benefited, benefited Henry County. If that, and that keeps it from having to, because all of them have to come to you all anyway.
Right. Because, and I agree, you know, you do still have some that are living, and I always say, give them their flowers while they live, because people live a long time, you know? So, we definitely want to make sure that we honor them. So, I'm sure that there's something that we can add in this to make that happen.
So, maybe all applications received have to be approved by the board. And so, I think it still gives you all the discretion, if you don't, even if they don't meet this, you all still have the authority to grant the honorary naming. One other point that I want to make sure I make is that for new buildings, it's any, it's, you can, you all can provide the stipulations for those new buildings. So, for any new buildings, then if it's someone who is still alive, then this criteria would not be applicable, if that makes sense. So, we can certainly...
I like that.
Yep.
Commissioner Angler?
I just have a, kind of a, I guess logistical concern. I know according to the way the policy reads, that they have to submit the information for the paper, and it has to be approved. Is there a way that we can, along with the fee that they pay, do that so that we can cut out them having to have it approved? If the county takes that responsibility, then we'll know exactly what the wording needs to be and where it needs to be in the paper. And I think that'll cut down on at least, you know, a couple of steps in that process, if that's possible.
And let me apologize, because Commissioner Price did send that request to me last week, and it did not, I think we were going to discuss it at the meeting. And so, Commissioner Price's request was, can we establish some type of application fee? And whatever that application fee amount is, that will go towards the legal advertisement cost. Obviously, the cost is going to be different in terms of if it's a display ad or just a standard ad, but I think, you know, $25 or $50 as a fee could certainly accommodate a ad request. And I could certainly work with our county clerk in determining what an appropriate amount is. If we wanted to adopt the policy as read, we could say an applicable or an application fee will be required as determined by the county clerk. And I'll toss it to her, because I know that she does ads, and then our planning and zoning department does advertisements as well. And so, that's certainly, in addition to, on the application piece, we can say an application fee will be required.
On both options, is what?
It would be on both. Yes, sir, because I believe for both options, you still have to provide notice to the legal organ. So, option one, where it says county covers costs, that would be a part of that application fee. I think what I'm hearing from Commissioner Price, let's go ahead and get it all. And so, in option two, where it says notice in legal organ, that too would then be changed to county covers cost, because we'll get it at the application fee point. Is that right, Commissioner?
I think so, yes.
Okay.
So, my concern with that, why don't we handle the money twice? If we go to option two, just let them pay the legal organ, that way we don't have to receive the money from them, then we turn around and pay it, and just let them pay it, and all we're responsible for is the standard signage on option two.
So, that's what the board is gonna have to decide on? Because that's what I've heard from, from, the board is really split in terms of the preference, and that's why we're presenting two options.
And the reason I suggested that, because reading the policy, it states that the individual making the application would make the application, and then they would have to submit the wording to the county so that the county can approve the wording before it is placed in the legal ad. So, I was just suggesting to cut that middle step out, since we've got to approve it anyway, just let us go ahead and do the wording so that part is, is done. Because if they've submitted to us and it's wrong, then they've either got to go back and correct it, or we've got to correct it. But if we do it on the front end, then that part is done.
Okay, so y'all got two options. Somebody make a motion. Go ahead.
I'm sure I'll make a motion that would go with option two, as, as written.
Second.
Got a motion and a second. All in favor? All opposed?
So, Commissioner Wilson made a motion to approve option two?
As written.
As written.
I think Commissioner Robinson wanted the option for the commissioners to have the ability to, what, Commissioner Robinson, would you repeat?
All of that will be in it regardless of what the option is, it's just a matter of who pays for what.
Right. And my thought was, I didn't feel that the constituents should pay if they've done a lot in this community, and we're talking about standard signage that we currently do now, anyway. The only thing in option one that they would pay for is the decorative signage, but everything that we've stated applies to option one, other than the county is paying for standard signage that we do right now.
So, I believe I had a motion for option two, but the vote was three, two.
That's right. As written. It was four, two.
Four, two, that's a moot point.
I'm sorry, I missed somebody there.
Chair voted as well.
Okay, I didn't see chair's hand. Okay, so four, two. Okay, my apologies.
As written.
Okay. My apologies. So, the motion carried for option two, four, two. Okay, I'm clear. Thank you very much.
In your language, would you...
Community Development. Shannon? Oh. Who's doing? Okay, all right.
Good evening, Madam Chair and Board of Commissioners. Been a little change in the schedule. My name is Raven, I am a community development specialist, too, with our community development department, and I have for you this evening... I'm sorry. Give us just a second, I'm sorry.
Madam Chair, can we go to the next item, then we'll come back to community development?
Okay, thank you. Next item on the agenda is planning and zoning, RZ-23-09. Can't tell?
Good evening, Chair, board members, and citizens of Henry County. The item before you is for property located at 160 and 180 Sedg few Drive, approximately 10.066 plus or minus acres. And our request is to rezone the subject property from M1 light manufacturing to M2 heavy manufacturing. And our request is to rezone the subject property from M-one light manufacturing to M-two heavy manufacturing. Uh, this is the aerial, um, photo, photography of the subject property. Current zoning, again, M-one, and the future land use map designation of industrial. Uh, this is a survey that was provided, uh, by the applicant, as well as that site plan. Uh, the rezoning request in front of you is for a waste transfer station, um, which is not permitted under M-one, requires it M-two zoning district. Uh, the property is located within an existing industrial park. Uh, the future land use map designation of industrial that would actually support the rezoning request to M-two. Uh, here are some comments that we received from various departments. Uh, the rezoning request for a waste transfer station, uh, is, was determined to be a DRI, Development of Regional Impact. Uh, with that, the A R C, uh, Atlanta Regional Commission, uh, requires us to provide, uh, the site plan and, and application materials, uh, and have that regional review. Um, regional view consists of, of course, Atlanta Regional Commission, uh, Greta, as well as, uh, input from other neighboring jurisdictions. Uh, that DRI process was completed with a notice of decision provided to the county on February twelfth, twenty-twenty-four. Uh, a portion of the subject property is located within a watershed protection limited development area. However, the portion within that limited development area and watershed is that's, uh, is a small sliver of property on the east property line, adjacent to the railroad. Uh, they are not encroaching, as according to the site plan, they're not encroaching into that wetland area. I'm sorry, uh, watershed protection area. Uh, staff does recommend approval of the applicant's request at the, uh, May ninth zoning advisory board meeting. At that meeting, the zoning advisory board did also recommend approval of the applicant's request with the addition of condition four, definition for waste transfer. At the time, uh, staff did not have that definition, but that has been created for, for this, uh, rezoning request. Uh, since publishing the report, staff has modified condition four for clarity, uh, with the changes shown in red, um, rather minor change. Thank you so much, I'd be happy to take any questions you might have.
Any questions from the board? Um, Commissioner Lewis, this is in your district.
No, it's a public hearing.
Oh, it's a, oh, it's, oh, okay, okay. Okay, this is a public hearing, anyone wishing to come to speak in favor, please come forward. Um, you have ten minutes, a collective total of ten minutes.
Good evening, Commissioners, can you hear me okay? My name is Josh Mahoney, and I'm an attorney at Battle Law P.C., which is located at three-five-six-two Haversham at North Lake in Tucker, Georgia. And I am here this evening speaking on behalf of the applicant, Bartram Properties LLC, and I'm joined by, uh, Mr. David Bartram here in the, in the, in the crowd. Uh, I'm here this evening to discuss the proposed rezoning of the property at one sixty and one eighty Sedgview Drive from M-one to M-two, to allow for that waste transfer station. Um, as you saw, the definition from the planning staff does encompass what we're, we're capable of doing here at this site, and we are totally okay with that condition, as well as the other three conditions. So I want to start by, uh, talking about Mr. Bartram's currently existing waste transfer facility in the city of Hampton. It's actually not far from the subject property we're here discussing this evening. Um, it's operating today, but we're looking to move that business from this location off of East Main Street to, uh, Sedgview Drive. As you can see from the satellite image, uh, we're located near some residential, uh, some residentially used property, and we're trying to move away from those residential uses into a more industrial area. So here you can see, um, where we would be moving and where we would be moving from. Um, just up, just up East Main Street, turning onto Amalee, and then into that industrial park. We'd be all the way in the back, uh, surrounded by other industrial uses. Zooming in a little bit, you can, you can start to get, uh, an idea of what is going on around the site. Uh, to the north, that is, uh, a shingle manufacturing plant. Uh, also in our, uh, in the Liberty Industrial Park, we've got a number of trailer parking and truck parking facilities. Uh, on this map, you can, you can really start to get an idea of the other industrial uses that would be surrounding our use. Everything with a pin dropped on it is some sort of industrial use. Uh, this makes a lot of sense, since we are in an industrial park, where all the other properties are zoned M-one. Um, so we would really be moving from a space where there's a lot of residential uses into a more industrial space. We feel this would be a much better fit for what we're trying to do, and we would move away from those, from those uses where folks may not want, uh, a waste transfer facility nearby. Uh, we've already talked a little bit about the zoning. I do want to point out that to the north, just on the other side of the shingle manufacturing plant, you do have some M-two zoning already. We're just looking to change over from this light gray to that dark gray color so that we can operate that waste transfer station. As Mr. Lanham pointed out, the future land use designation on the property is industrial, which will support our rezoning. Uh, the, the great part about this is that you can really see that the surrounding properties are also planned to be industrial into the future, so you don't have a chance of that changing. So we will be in that industrial park, surrounded by other industrial uses for a long time. So this is our site plan, uh, it is comprised of three major components. We've got an office, first thing, right off of the cul-de-sac, where employees will be able to park their, their personal vehicles, while they'll work, uh, to do administrative, um, pieces that will support the waste transfer station. The waste transfer station itself will be behind the office, away from the road, uh, and that's where the trucks will be making their deliveries. And then down to the south, you've got a large parking lot where trucks will be able to park, uh, and be, be stored in the meantime. Um, this plan is, is exactly the same, just with a little bit of color to give you an idea of where we'll be operating in relation to the rest of the property. Uh, as you can see, a lot of the property is actually not being used, which means, um, all of the buffers that we have, um, to, we have in place to avoid the watershed area are increased. So we're staying very far away from that watershed area so that we don't, uh, run the risk of encroaching into it. Um, so, as Mr. Lanham mentioned, we did have to go through a DRI as part of this, this project. Waste transfer stations automatically trigger the DRI process, and that is because they're looking, the A R C is looking to see what sort of traffic impact is going to happen in the area. Normal procedure dictates that we do a traffic impact study to look at the entirety of the area. However, there's a threshold that the A R C is looking for us to meet. If we are at one thousand trips per day or more, we need that traffic impact study. But if we're less than that, A R C is willing to let us go with a traffic, uh, a trip generation report. We are coming in at four hundred and fifty-two trips daily, well below that one thousand trip per day threshold. So they let us do a trip generation memo. Um, and what that turned up was that there would be four hundred and fifty-two daily trips, forty-three trips during A.M. peak hours, and forty-three during the P.M. peak hours. So not much impact coming from traffic at all from this operation. And another part that came out of that DRI is this, this truck routing plan. And what this is, is it shows you exactly where trucks that are traveling to and from this facility are allowed to go, and where they're not allowed to go. Most importantly, uh, just west of Sedgview, there's a, the residential uses start to pick back up right after Steel Drive. So what the plan has done is drawn a line on Steel Drive to prohibit any truck traffic from going past Steel Drive and into that residential area. So there will be no trucks going into that, into that space. They'll be delegated, uh, to the highways going north-south, and then across the top there. Um, I think that's eighty-one, it's a little too far away for me to see, unfortunately. Um, and then back down and, uh, taking a right onto Amalee. So the trucks will be routed all the way around, and they won't, uh, disturb any residential areas. Uh, but with that, we are looking, again, to rezone the property from M-one to M-two so that we can move our waste transfer station, where it's currently today, uh, to Sedgview Drive and continue serving, uh, Henry County. With that, I'll take any questions y'all might have, and reserve the rest of my time, thank you.
Thank you. Um, next we have, anyone that wants to speak in opposition? Anyone want to speak in opposition? Okay, so this concludes our public hearing. I did have a question with regards to the, uh, trucks. Who's going to tell the trucks they can't go to, go the opposite way? Who's, who's going to be responsible for that? Do we cite the company, or do we cite the trucks?
You would cite the company. So it's my understanding that there are, there's, there's tracking in each of the trucks, and that Mr. Bartram will be made aware of when trucks go to where they're not supposed to go. Uh, if they get caught in those areas, then you would cite, um, Mr. Bartram's company, yes.
Um, and I would also like to mention that this is an already established, established truck route. There are some signs already existing. Um, the police, uh, are aware of, of it being a truck route, uh, at least a portion of, of Amalee Road.
I understand that we have a lot of truck routes in the county, and trucks, a lot of times, don't follow the rules of the truck routes. So I just want to make sure that we're following the rules.
Certainly.
Commissioner, uh, Lewis?
Yes, um, I just want to say this is probably one of the easiest cases I've seen. And the reason I say it's easy is because this proposed site is a far better site to me than where, um, the current transfer facility is. The current transfer facility, if, if anybody's familiar with the area, if you go down Highway Three, it's, it's really almost in downtown Hampton. And with the new neighborhood that was just built, it's directly across the street from the transfer station. So the new proposed site for the transfer station is actually going to put it back into an industrial site that you cannot see from the road. So to me, it's, it's very easy. This is great for the residents who live in that area. Um, I do want to point out, though, that, um, I am very appreciative of Mr. Bartram and his business. Um, if you know about Henry County, there are very few places where you can legally dump trash. And he pretty much has the only one in this, in the county outside of the recycling center that we operate. So, uh, I know we, we constantly gripe about the number of people who illegally dump, uh, in the county, and without, uh, without Mr. Bartram's business, it would probably be a lot worse than what it currently is. So, uh, I am wholeheartedly in favor of moving this business off of Highway Three and in downtown Hampton into an industrial site, which is where it should actually be. So, um, with that, I, I make, I move to approve, um, the new industrial site for, uh, the A.D.N. waste facility.
Okay, got a motion, got a second?
Second.
Got a motion and a second. No further discussion, all in favor? Motion carries.
Thank you.
Madam Chair, we're ready to go back to the next vote.
Come on, Raven, let's try one more time.
Okay, one more time. Good evening, again, I have for you a public hearing and request for approval for the twenty-twenty-four Annual Action Plan. In it, we have, uh, detailed different projects to use CDBG and home funds. In CDBG funds, we're looking at a little over one point one million dollars, and in home funds, just over four hundred thousand. So in preparing for our Annual Action Plan, we held eight needs assessments across the county, beginning at the end of April, continuing into about the middle of May. And from that, um, we held those at local libraries, um, senior centers, and the McDonough Housing Authority. In doing that process, the goal is to access information from different, um, demographics across the county. We also had a needs assessment available online, there was one for the community, and then also one for stakeholders. The results from that needs, uh, needs assessment survey were a great need for public facility improvements, um, contributions to public services, rehabilitation services, and economic development. So with that, we have recommendations for those different, um, types of projects for our Community Development Block Grant. Uh, we have public facility rehabilitation, which would be our housing rehab program, and, um, our public, uh, public housing rehabilitation, uh, public service activities, and then our planning and administration costs. With our home funds, we have, um, our administrative, administrative costs, um, funds to CHODO's, community housing development organizations, and then tenant-based rental assistance. In a previous board meeting, we brought before you, um, or, eh, just some information that we were planning to reprogram some funds from the F Y twenty-twenty-three Annual Action Plan. We are still requesting to do that, that would be to delete the down payment assistance and to increase the tenant-based rental assistance. And I can answer any questions you may have, and this is a public hearing.
Okay. We'll have the, uh, public hearing first. Um, are there anyone from the public that would, um? Stephanie, did you get any requests for anyone? Okay, all right. So public hearing, is, anyone like to come to make comments with regards to the plan? Okay. Uh, ends the public hearing, is there any comments or questions from the board? I hear none, can I get a motion to approve? Got a motion?
Second.
Got a second, all in favor? Motion carries.
Thank you.
So do, do I need to call for another motion, Stephanie, for? Okay, so this, this was the motion for the F Y twenty-four Annual Action Plan for CDBG and Home Funds Program, that's what we just voted on. So to delegate the role of cert, certifying officer and HERO's Local Administrator of HUD-related Environmental Review Process to the Director of Community Development, which would be Shannon. So we need to make a motion on that?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, so can I get a motion for us to delegate that responsibility to Shannon?
So will.
Can I get a second? Got a motion and a second, all in favor? Motion carries.
Thank you.
Okay. Next item on the agenda is RZ twenty-three dash thirteen. Uh, this is a public hearing, the Revive Land Group LLC.
Good evening, Chair, Board members, and citizens of Henry County. The item before you is for property located at the southwest corner of Little Road and Highway nineteen forty-one. A property is approximately nineteen point zero four plus or minus acres, and is currently zoned M-one light manufacturing. Uh, this is the aerial of the subject property. Current zoning, again, showing M-one, and the future land use map designation of low-density mixed use. Uh, the subject property, uh, rather the subject request, is to rezone the subject property from M-one to R-M for multifamily residence for the purpose of a ninety-three fee simple townhome development. Uh, this is the conceptual plan that was submitted by the applicant. Uh, again, it indicates that ninety-three townhome unit count. The elevations here are shown on the screens provided by the applicant. Here are some neighboring developments in the area. That northeast corner is the subject of one of our other cases tonight. That southeast corner was approved by the board earlier this year, all of which are for townhomes. Department comments shown here. The applicant is looking to rezone the subject property from M1 to RM for the purpose of that fee simple townhome development. A property is within the boundaries of that highway corridor overlay district and would need to meet those standards therein. Would be subject to comply with the design standards for multifamily developments, as well as that future land use map designation, that low-density mixed use. That would support up to eight dwelling units per acre. The proposed density for the development is 5.44 dwelling units per net acre. There were some concerns brought up regarding the proximity of the site to the Speedway Airport. Let me quickly go back to, this map will do. That bottom-left corner, kind of that panhandle shape there, that is that Speedway Airport and Runway. After the zoning advisory board meeting, an airspace analysis report was conducted and found no impact to the runway. The report noted that the small portion of the development falls within the runway protection zone. However, that area is largely floodplain and is actually to be used as a stormwater management facility, as indicated in the site plan. Let me quickly go back to that. That runway protection zone would really kind of cover this corner here of the proposed development. No units are within that runway protection zone. Additionally, the topic of stormwater management facilities was noted, stating that a pond may attract birds, which of course could impact flight patterns there of the aircraft. To address concerns, staff has added Condition 4 and 5 to the zoning request, requiring a dry pond, as well as FAA approval before the issuance of any land disturbance permit. That is 4 and 5 there. On January 11th, 2024, the zoning advisory board did recommend an approval of the applicant's request to rezone from M1 to RM for the purpose of that townhome development. Those conditions are shown on the screen here. That's all that I have for you today, not today, but for this case. I'd be happy to take any questions you might have.
Thank you. This is a public hearing. Is there anyone that'd like to come and speak in favor of the project? You have 10 minutes.
Good evening. Michelle Battle with Battle Law, 3562 Haverhill, Northlake, Tucker, Georgia, 30084. I will try not to be redundant with regards to the comments that have already been made by staff. As already indicated, we are seeking to develop the site for 93 townhome units and rezoning from M1 to RM. What we know about this site, we are in an area, as you can see from the plan, where you've got a lot of large undeveloped lots. And we know that there's been a lot of emphasis placed on new development within and along this corridor. The property as currently zoned M1 is not consistent with the current land use map. So our request to go to RM actually is consistent with the low-density mixed use designation. We do understand that this corridor, as it grows, will need more amenities and commercial-related items along the corridor. However, we believe that as this corridor fills out, it has to bring some of the density in order to support any type of commercial that may be coming in the future. The proposal that has been set forth, again, provides for the 93 townhome units with two-car garages, guest spaces. We are at 5.44 units per acre, and we do have one full access off of Little Road and then a right-in, right-out off of Highway 1941. The site plan also provides for community amenity space, pocket parks, green space, and we will be providing the cabana and other fire pit and other requirements as set forth under the staff's conditions. We've shown you some potential elevations for the site. Again, two-car garages with a six-foot sidewalk, seven-foot landscape strip. We are in compliance with the highway overlay district. And we were, if there are any questions that anyone may have. Thank you.
Is there anyone that'd like to come and speak in opposition of this project? Please come and state your name.
Good evening, Commissioners. My name is Debbie Little Bonnell. I live at 95 Little Road, Hampton, Georgia. Our land is right there on the edge of the back part of where those townhomes are gonna be built. We've watched some of the meetings and, of course, attended some, and I watched the one regarding Nail Road Project. We agree with them, as for many different reasons also. Our road is not much bigger than theirs, a little bit bigger than theirs, and our road is a cut-through from Woolsey to 1941. And I can't see it taking on much more traffic. You know, I walk every day, and I have to be careful when I make a U-turn at the top of my driveway to go back down to make sure the cars aren't flying by. Also, the signs on the road that states the speed limit are covered with bushes. You can't even see the speed limit. Anyway, has there been a traffic impact study done? I didn't hear anything said about that, but I just really can't see that Little Road can handle any more traffic. 1941 itself is very congested. I choose my times when I'm gonna go shopping, grocery shopping. It's early in the morning when I head to Griffin. It's getting kind of dangerous going the other way. And so I can be back home by 10:00 or 10:30 before it gets crazy. Because not only is 1941 congested just from, you know, the growth, when 75 backs up, oh my gosh, it gets worse, almost on a daily basis. You just have to pick your times when you go out. You know, we've heard many Henry County residents voicing their concern at these meetings of the building of the homes, the townhomes. And I think the homes are not as bad as the townhomes. I would, you know, see, would rather see more homes than townhomes. Our property, and well, first of all, we don't have a grocery store close. We have to go to Lovejoy or Griffin, no grocery store, not a drugstore, no nice restaurants, no gas stations in the area. And our property that joins the Atlanta Motor Speedway in the airport has always been earmarked. Of course, that has changed from to industrial use. And if the casino goes in at the Atlanta Motor Speedway, you would think you wouldn't want houses or townhomes around, that you wouldn't want, you know, something business-related instead of that. And not only that, but along with all the, I'm gonna say, thousands of homes that's going in across 1941 off 81, and even heard even more going on down 81 are gonna be put in. And of course, the wildlife is running like crazy. The trees are gone, no shade. Global warming, maybe? So I also sent an email to Commissioner Lewis, and I don't know if I did that properly or not, and I apologize if I didn't do, if I was not supposed to do that. But I did. If this project would happen to be approved, I would, we would like to request an 80-foot undisturbed buffer to our connecting land, because our land is right there. And as far as the road is concerned, no curb cuts unless it's in the middle of the road. Little Road's not big. Thank you very much for listening.
Yes, ma'am.
Hello, my name's Tom Bonnell. I live at 95 Little Road also. I look at this, and I don't ever, your job, because you're basically looking at planning, whether it was yesterday, today, tomorrow, five years down the road, 10 years down the road, but you still gotta look at it and see what's coming. I've attended other cities that had probably the same problem, and when their vision was coming, they at least left a space open for commercial people. And yes, you can tear these things all back out and put commercial in there. But we have two potential growth areas there that it's gonna be amazing if you can keep up with to make sure that they've got what they need to do. One is the airport, the other is the Atlanta Motor Speedway. There's a lot of potential with the airport and twice as much with the Atlanta Motor Speedway. And with your allowing those 92 townhomes to be in that area, it removes all that potential commercial area. And if you ever go to another city and attend a NASCAR race, you look down there for miles, that's commercial on both sides. You've taken it all away. If the area's lacking commercial space, there's some other things coming down the road, too. You probably all have heard the dreams of the casino. And yes, it's not gonna happen till Georgia votes in gambling. But if once it's going, it's not saying that even there would be the place they would put this casino, could go to Savannah or other places, because we've already drained all the area of any usage land there that, for the commercial portions of it. I don't wanna sell our land. I'm happy right exactly where I'm at. But if I'm gonna do it, and it probably won't happen in my lifetime, I would rather wait. Our land adjoins the Atlanta Motor Speedway, and I could sell it for a lot more to a hotel putting on our eight acres than I have with the other. But again, is, down the road, there's some things coming, and once we give everything away, it's hard to change it. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, sir.
Okay, that ends our public hearing. I do have a couple of questions about Little Road. What improvements are going to be made, if any, to Little Road?
Certainly. Due to the number of units and the daily trips anticipated, that is going to require a traffic impact study, which will outline all of the improvements necessary for Little Road. That is also one of our conditions.
And what about the buffer that she talked about along the backside of her property?
Our code would require a buffer between residential and the property is currently zoned, the other property adjacent to it is currently zoned M1. It would require a buffer. Our code would not require an 80-foot buffer, I will say.
Well, what would the buffer be?
It would require a 40-foot.
Okay. I heard somebody say 20, I heard you say 40. What is it?
It would be 40. It's adjacent to, our code, commercial and non-residential uses adjacent to residential, that'll require 40.
Where is the other residential? Where these townhomes are? Where is it at, on the backside?
Backside. It's 19. Could you repeat that question one more time?
I wanna know where they live based on what, behind the townhomes. I'm trying to figure out, this is Little Road. So is everything in the white back there residential?
Everything in white is zoned RA. This property here is M1. I do believe there is a home on that property. Obviously, the land use for residential and the zoning does not match in that instance. I'm not sure the history of that subject property, but I do believe a home does exist here. So actually, I would like to clarify, because the land use of this subject property is residential, our code would technically require the 20-foot residential, residential. I don't know if that's really the intent of that code section. Difficult to say, reserve.
Any other questions from any of the board members? Commissioner Wilson?
Can you pull up the conditions?
Certainly.
Do you have any conditions in here for a fire suppression system in these units?
We do not.
That's all I have.
Okay, Commissioner.
My question is, and I liked how the gentleman stated about the future of our Atlanta Motor Speedway, and this question is to our county manager. Is this something that a discussion has been had with the Atlanta Motor Speedway, if it would impact them in any way in the future?
So I don't believe that the actual application request went to AMS. I know that we do have a provision that we notify the adjacent property owners. And so I'll have to defer to Kenta to determine if we actually notified them of the rezoning request. But as of today, I don't think that we've received any feedback from AMS regarding the development.
And the reason why I ask that, because I know there's some future plans of, you know, the support that the county has for them, if that would be a negative impact, so.
I don't know, Kenta, if you can speak to that.
Yes. No one, as far as I'm aware, has reached out to staff from AMS regarding this proposed development. This subject property here, again, immediately adjacent to the property in question tonight, is owned by Atlanta Motor Speedway. A postcard would have been mailed to the owner of all adjacent properties, including that Atlanta Motor Speedway property. Postcards would have been sent out before the zoning advisory board and before tonight's meeting.
Can you pull back up the map that shows the, where you were talking about the airport?
Do you want the runway protection zone? Yes, certainly. So this is the proposed development here. This is, I believe, the proposed, there was discussions of runway expansion in the future. I apologize. That is no longer in effect. That is now no longer being part of the discussion. But the runway protection zone is a trapezoidal shape that is shown in this faint red-orange outline. That runway protection zone encroaches into the subject property just a little bit there. And here we see that the stormwater management facility is the only thing that would occupy that space.
I see land here, land. I mean, I'm just thinking in the future.
So currently, we have one runway extension planned of 750-foot. The RPZ that it's showing is taking that into account. That's not our current RPZ, that's the future RPZ with that extension. The only thing that would potentially impact this is if there's ever either a longer extension planned or a second extension after the 750 that's on our ALP plan. Right now, it is not in our RPZ.
Right now, but if at some point in the future, we decide to become a regional airport, and we are having to land larger jets, and I don't mean the 757, so I don't want nobody thinking that was 757 laying in Henry County. But, you know, you do have some jets that are a little bit larger. Delta has 50-passenger jets and... Delta has 50-passenger jets, and, you know, there are 30-passenger jets and those types of things. And so how would that impact us in the future if that was, if there was an opportunity for us to expand to a regional airport?
So we would not be able to extend our runway any more than that 750-foot that's currently planned unless we bought out the, yeah, it would, you would have to basically purchase that entire area.
Okay. Thank you.
All right.
No questions? So with this proposal, we've gone back and forth, I guess it's probably been about a year. And those are the things that were required, especially going through zoning, the zoning advisory board, just trying to make sure that we did not impact the runway protection zones, which we were just talking about, as well as any future expansion, which was my question. That's the question that I asked of staff. And just to kind of get an idea of what we wanted to do in the future, because the airport is important to me because I think it's a great expansion tool for the county. I did take into account, I know, did email back and forth with Mr. and Mrs. Barnell, and they did express to me that they were, they weren't opposed to development. They just were more inclined to lean towards something that had to do with a casino. And I know, we don't know if or when that will ever happen, but I don't think that this property at the time is going to be germane to that discussion. So just going back and forth, like I said, with the revived land group, we did come up with what we thought was the best use of the land. So I do actually support the project as it stands. This piece, along with the piece, the four corners, are in future land use map slated for low-density mixed use, which does allow for this type of development. So with that being said, I was in support of the project.
You're making.
Okay. And so I do make a motion to approve.
Got a motion to approve. Is there a second? County attorney, we do not have a second.
The motion fails. Collette, is that?
Madam Chair, I'd like to make a motion to deny.
We have a motion to deny. Is there a second on that?
Second.
Got a second on that. All in favor of the denial. Please, Jan. Motion fails.
Okay.
Next item, RZ 23-14.
Good evening, Chair, Board members, and citizens of Henry County. The item before you is for property located at the northeast corner of Franklin Rivers Road and Highway 1941. The property is currently zoned RA, residential agricultural, and is approximately 24.23 plus or minus acres. And the request to rezone the subject property from RA to RM is for the purpose of a 145 fee simple townhome development. This is the subject property shown on the aerial photography. Current zoning, again, of RA, residential agricultural, and that future land use map designation of low-density mixed use. This is the site plan that was submitted by the applicant. A plan indicates 145 townhome units, meeting the standards of the RM zoning district in multifamily developments. And these are the elevations provided by the applicant as well. Again, similar pages to last case, we have some of the proposed developments in the area with that southeast corner being approved by the board, that southwest corner, of course, being denied just previously. Here are some comments that we received from various departments, including the Water and Sewerage Authority, DOT, and Transportation Planning, the School Board, and Public Safety. The applicant is requesting to rezone the subject property from RA to RM for the purpose of that fee simple townhome development. Again, 145 townhome units. Property is within the boundaries of the highway corridor overlay district, and we need to comply with those standards therein. It would also need to comply with the design standards for multifamily developments. The company's of plan and future land use map calls for low-density mixed use, supporting up to eight dwelling units per acre. Proposed density of the development is 6.42 dwelling units per net acre. On January 11th, 2024, zoning advisory board recommend approval of the applicant's request to rezone the subject property from RA to RM. Since then, staff has modified the conditions to read as follows. I do want to make mention of condition eight shown here. Since publishing the report, staff has modified condition eight to reflect the date of an updated site plan. The new plan dated May 30th, 2024, shows the additional right-of-way dedication along Lake Amelie Road as described in condition six. Condition six reading dedicate 40 feet of right-of-way along Lake Amelie from centerline, from existing centerline, I should specify.
Collective total of 10 minutes.
Good evening, Michelle Battle with Battle Law, 3562 Haversham at Northlake, Tucker, As staffed already stated, we are seeking to rezone this property from RA to RM. Again, we are in the low-density mixed use land use district, and the RM designation is appropriate for the site. The property, again, is located off of 1941 and is within the highway corridor overlay district. We know that the property immediately south of this site has been rezoned for townhome development. We are requesting the same for the subject property. We will have access only from Franklin Rivers Road and from Highway 1941. There will be no access from Lake Amelie. And the site plan, as shown, provides for 145 townhome lots. It's a challenging site because of the stream buffer that lies along the south, I guess that's the southeastern, southeastern corner of the site, which kind of bifurcates some of the units onto the other side of the creek. The property itself has 6.42 units per acre and with the full entrance and the right-in, right-out off of Highway 51. There will be two-car garages and guest parking spaces throughout. We also are proposing and agree to the resort-style swimming pool, along with the cabana and other requirements as set forth under the staff's recommendation. We were able to obtain approval of variances from the planning commission, from the zoning board. We were able to approve the increase for the maximum street length. Also, there was a stream buffer reduction from 100 to 75 because of the tightness of the site on the back for the stormwater detention facilities, and also eliminate the adjacent parcel connection that is required. This does show what the staff is referring to in condition eight, where we are required to provide for an extension of Lake Amelie. We will be donating an addition 15 feet of right-of-way along Lake Amelie. Under the current code, we don't have to actually make those improvements, but we do have to provide for the additional right-of-way dedication. The site building facades are, again, as shown. And with regards to this application, once again, we believe that as this area continues to expand, that the townhome use provides for a buffer against the single-family subdivisions that will lie further out as you're moving away from Highway 1941. We know, again, that there are large swaths of land in this area. We believe that this is an appropriate and suitable use along this corridor. You have to have the density in order to allow for some of the commercial that has already been spoken of, that many of the residents would like to see in this area. However, it's not a very highly dense area, and I believe that's why the future land use map provided for low-density mixed use along this corridor. Please remember that the low-density mixed use designation does allow for RM zoning, which is a multifamily development zoning designation that does not require any commercial as a part of any development that is developed under the RM designation. So again, we are respectfully requesting approval of the application based on the staff's recommendation. Thank you.
Is there anyone that would like to speak in opposition of this particular project? Please come forward. Anyone here to speak in opposition? Okay, that closes out the public hearing. Are there any questions from the board? Commissioner Wilson?
So I have spoke this on townhomes in the past. State does not allow our authority of jurisdiction and our fire safety code, which is our Fire Master's office, to classify a townhome as multifamily. So as you see in the pictures, these townhomes, you probably have four to six under one roof. So therefore, they're not required to sprinkle these units by state code. Now, the board commissioners can request these units to be sprinkled. They can make requests to sprinkle them in a residential setting or a commercial setting as commercial would be in the multifamily setting, like in apartments. So it'd be the same type, same type if the board commissioners wishes to put that in some of the conditions. So that's my comments on townhomes.
Kenta, can you go back to the drawing where it shows the full layout of the? Because it shows, you're saying the pool, but I don't see it on the full layout. I see it on the, like, the renderings, but here, I don't see it.
Yes, it's not shown here on this colored rendering. Our zoning conditions specify amenity package to include pocket parks, dog parks, 1,200 square-foot clubhouse with gas, fire pits, and grilling area, children's playgrounds with benches, as well as that resort-style pool. So even if it's not shown here on this rendering, our zoning conditions would require that pool, for example.
Will it fit in there?
Where is it going?
So, because I see where it says the community, the amenity space, but will a pool, a clubhouse, and all that fit there?
Playground?
If the conditions specify that it'll need to be in there, it'll need to be in there and shown.
Yes, they will fit in that space. We'd actually had those in. It wasn't clear exactly which one staff was going to require, but you can see here that the pool and the cabana are located in that space. Additionally, we will be able to have the dog park and the other requirements. We would have to comply with that if that meant that we had to lose some units in order to do it. That's what we would have to do.
Okay. So you're actually losing a dog park as well?
No, we're going to provide for all of the things that staff is requiring, we will have to insert into the plan.
Okay.
So we won't be losing anything. We'll be gaining those items.
So in order to fit it in, you will take away some of the units, is what you're saying?
Whatever we have to do to fit it in, that's what we have to do to fit it in, because that's what our requirement is.
Any other questions from the board? And where exactly is this again, Kenta?
Yes.
Trying to get a visual.
It might be a little bit easier to see. So that bottom, that bottom-left corner here is that Speedway Airport runway and county property. This pink here indicates PD, planned development, that is part of the Atlanta Motor Speedway, which is a little bit further south off of this plan. Little Road, Franklin Rivers, 1941. Let's see. Old Highway 3, I believe it's what it's referred to as, and I'm forgetting the street now. That's further east. That goes into the city of Hampton.
So it's basically on the opposite of the previous development?
Exactly, yes.
Commissioner Lewis?
Yeah, I know we've gone back and forth with this for a long time as well. However, I have recently gotten some comments from some residents who live off of Amelie and those subdivisions naven there, and it's something that I think we all need to take into consideration. So with that, I'd like to move to table this to later date.
Can we table it? Or does, who makes the request to table? Do we table it or? Okay.
The board will have to table it.
Okay.
But we have to pick a date, right?
So, Madam Chair, there's a motion on the floor, so Commissioner Lewis needs to get a second, and then you all can discuss to that specific date.
Okay, so is the motion to table it or to table it to a specific date is the question?
That's, Commissioner Lewis, what is your desire?
We can do September is fine.
So the first or second meeting?
Second meeting in September.
Okay. Madam Clerk, do you know what date that is?
September 17.
Okay. A motion on the floor to table it September 17. Okay, is there a second? A second? Commissioner Anglin, is that what it? All in favor? All opposed? And I abstain. Thank you, Kenta. Next item is RZ 23-19. Come on.
Good evening, Chair, Board members, and citizens of Henry County. The rezoning request in front of you is for property located at 982 Jonesboro Road on the corner of Jonesboro and Oak Grove Road. The subject property is highlighted in green on the overhead maps, and the zoning is currently residential agriculture, while the future land use designation is high-density mixed So I'm going to walk, I'm going to walk through the various site plans that have matriculated to this moment. There are quite a few, so I'll be sure to take my time and explain them thoroughly. So this is the first site plan that was submitted during their actual application submittal. That was on July 12, 2023. The original site plan included a mixed-use concept with four leased apartment and four sale townhomes with a commercial building on the corner of Oak Grove and Jonesboro. townhomes with a commercial building on the corner of Oak Grove and Jonesboro. After discussion with the developer, staff thought it best to reorient the development and bring the apartments up to the front of Jonesboro Road to create a natural step down where you go to less density as you move north along Oak Grove. And this also included a grocery store element and a site plan, just in case the grocery store didn't work out. So this is what was, this is what was shown to the zoning advisory board on December 14, 2023. After the zoning advisory board meeting, the developer decided to go with an all-for-sale townhome plan instead. That also includes the grocery store or the commercial element. So this is the plan that we're bringing forth today for a decision. And this is all-for-sale townhomes. The applicant is requesting a rezoning from RA to MU for 30.242 plus or minus acres with 26.50 plus or minus of that being net developable. 10.9 plus or minus units per acre net is the proposed density. The future land use designation of the subject property is high-density mixed-use, which supports densities of up to eight 220 units to the acre. And again, they're at 10.9 with this current plan. The site plan heard by the ZAB on December 14, 2023 included 270 apartment units for rent, 151 to 165 townhome units intended for fee simple ownership, and 15,000 to 27,000 square feet of commercial, depending on if it was commercial or the grocery store element. The plans that we received June 10, 2024, which you're looking at now, include 260 townhome units for fee simple ownership and that grocery store or general commercial element as well. These are a few examples of the townhomes that are being proposed for construction. Staff would use these concepts as a guide during our building architectural review process. They're not sure exactly who the builder is, so staff wanted examples of the style in general to base our review off of. I'll go back to the site plan very quickly. So the site plan does show and is provided for the highway corridor overlay standards along Jonesboro Road. The developer has agreed to dedicate 30 feet of right-of-way along Oak Grove Road for future widening, that I believe our SPOLOs department is currently working on their SPOLOs, their next SPOLOs. And they, we have been in communication with them, and they are fine with this site plan. So that when that widening does eventually happen, we don't have to go back to whoever owns this property and buy the land that's already dedicated as a part of the rezoning process. We have some comments from various departments, including water and sewer, sidewalks and streets, DOT SPOLOs, the school, the school board, and public safety. Nothing exactly jumped out that would make this rezoning impossible. So the ZAB did recommend denial of the request on December 14, 2023, back when the plan included apartments. Staff has reevaluated the case and considered the character of the area, the comprehensive plan, current and future development, current and future infrastructure demands, and access to services and resources. And staff does recommend approval of the request with the following 12 conditions shown in the overhead. The only condition that's different from your exhibit books is Condition 7. We reworked that condition to read as follows. An HOA should be required. Covenant should be recorded, which mandate the townhome pod should be developed as an owner-occupied community. No more than 10% of the homes may be rented or leased purchased at any one time. A copy of the recorded covenant shall be provided to the Building and Plan Review Department before final plat is approved. So we have 12 conditions here, and I'll be happy to take any questions.
Thank you. Come on. So we've already had the public hearing on this, correct?
No, ma'am.
Oh, we haven't? Okay. So this is a public hearing. Anyone wishing to come to speak in favor, please come forward. Have collective toll of 10 minutes.
Good evening, Chair, Commissioners. It's a pleasure to be back before you this evening. The last time I stood here before you was for 2080 Jonesboro Road, which is known as Croft House, which is just on the west side of 75 near McDonough Christian Church, kind of just past Target. You may have seen that that's completing right now. So just to say thanks for having me here again. As was mentioned, this is a mixed-use development located at the intersection of Jonesboro Road and Oak Grove Road. We thought it pertinent to cover a few things before we dive specifically into the project, just a couple of high-level topics that are driving, you know, a lot of what you're seeing today. So quickly to touch on some of the national trends that we're seeing, which also translate and trickle down into communities just like Henry County. First and foremost is that, you know, there's a continued housing deficit in our region. You know, right now, it's projected that we need about 1.15 million homes per year. So we're well behind pace on that. And so as you have noticed, you know, there is growth, but we're still struggling to keep up with that demand, particularly in the southeast and the Sun Belt as population continues to grow, as jobs continue to come to the southeast. We need housing to support those. Construction starts were down in 2023 due to some of the economic things, you know, happening on a macro level. So that, again, has put us a little further behind. The mortgage lock-in effect is something that's been, you know, really translating through a lot of communities, which is that so many people refinanced at very low interest rates, which is driving, significantly driving down the number of available homes on the market as resales, meaning that just about the only product that is available on the market is new construction. And so that's further contributing to, you know, the deficit in housing that we have. The shortage of buildable lots is, again, translated that it's just taking a long time to get to the point where we can construct homes. And then pricing and attainability. As we've seen, both existing home prices, construction costs, everything has run up, you know, with these inflationary trends, which is thereby making it very challenging for us, but we're working very, very hard to try to do everything we can to make homes attainable for the communities in which we're building them. You know, many communities today are seeing that their average household is being priced out of their own market, meaning that, you know, I think, I think the statistic was somewhere around 44% of those markets, the average household can't afford a home in that market anymore. So we're working very hard to do things to help drive that attainability such that, you know, the average constituents in those markets can afford those homes. You know, in Henry County especially, you know, the average household income in Henry County is just over $80,000, about $82,000 in today's dollars. That translates to an affordability factor of about $350,000, meaning you could qualify for a mortgage of about $350,000 with an $80,000 to $85,000 income. Furthering that is, just Henry County's population growth has been tremendous. As you know, over the last, you know, handful of years, it's grown about 2% on average. The Atlanta Regional Commission did a study and projected that Henry County's population would grow by about 44% between 2020 and 2050. That estimates about 1.5% per year, but even over the last four years, Henry County has already outpaced that by about 50%, meaning Henry County has already been at 2% as opposed to 1.5. So this project specifically, you know, as was mentioned, we've been working on this project for quite some time. We have heard the community feedback. We've heard the leadership feedback. We have done everything we can do to try to mold and shape this project into something that we can be proud of, that the county can be proud of, and that ultimately will foster community here. We care a lot about that, and as hope you've seen from our previous projects, that that means a lot to us, is building a very quality product and doing something that, you know, is a benefit to the community. But to touch on things, you know, we are at this point, because we've been working on this so long, we are at the point now where we have to go, or the whole thing is in jeopardy of just falling apart, because just simply due to time. We can only sustain so many impacts and so many different things along the way before it just erodes the entire operation. So specific to the site, I'll be brief here, because I think most of this has been covered. The property you can see here is at the intersection of Jonesboro Road and Oak Grove Road. The future land use plan does designate this as high-density mixed-use. The properties all around this are designated high-density mixed-use in the future land use plan, and the property directly adjacent to this was recently rezoned to mixed-use. So we are a bull's eye, dead center as far as, you know, land use plan and all that is concerned. Just a brief overview of kind of the area and why we think this site and this property makes a ton of sense. It has superior connectivity, so we know that traffic is a concern, but we think that due to the superior connectivity of this site, if you're going to build something like this, this is the place to do it. This is an intersection that is a four-way lighted interchange. It has both north and southbound connectivity, east and westbound connectivity. It has, you know, mixed-use all around it. In addition, there's some commercial moving out this way. You know, ironically, developing stuff on this side and developing commercial and stuff on this side of I-75 should help reduce traffic, meaning that people will not have to cross back over I-75 to the other side to get to some of those commercial nodes. So you need housing on this side of I-75 to help support that commercial, but in building that commercial, it should reduce and localize that traffic. As was mentioned, the old site plan contemplated multifamily townhomes and grocery. That was a little over 16 units an acre. Again, we have worked very hard to get the plan to the point that it is today, so we've reduced that down to about nine and a half units per acre gross. That is a density reduction of somewhere between 180 to 195 units. So that's a significant impact that we've absorbed, and again, we are working very hard to try to make this plan successful. I will move through these. So again, just to touch on the differences, formerly, we had significantly more density. We had apartments. We no longer have apartments. Now we have all fee simple or for-sale units. They were previously four-story, three-story, and two-story buildings. Now it's all two-story. And then previously, we had no right-of-way dedication. We are now in agreement and compliant with dedicating that right-of-way to the county for future road expansion. So we are doing our part to try to help facilitate the growth of the county as well. As was mentioned, these are the proposed elevations. I do want to clarify one thing. We do know who the builder is. That's not why we propose these. We are a master developer. We do this all the time. This is not due to us. So we are, we are, that is not the issue. What we have done here is simply shown a variety of different elevations, because what we want to do is design the community to have, you know, a characteristic that is cohesive and consistent, but that also allows us to do some things to create some variation and to create some interest throughout the community. And so we will have a variety of different floor plans, a variety of different options. And so we just wanted to showcase that there are a handful of different things that we will be targeting. So, but again, with a consistent theme and architectural style throughout. Thank you. I believe there's somebody behind me, so I will try to leave some time for them to speak, but thank you so much for having me. Appreciate it.
Are they here to speak in favor of the project?
Joshua Clark. I live at 1058 Brush Arbor in McDonough. I'm a lifelong resident of McDonough. I grew up in Ola, so I've been here since the late '80s. So I've seen, I've seen Henry County change a lot. Obviously, we know it's growing. It's continuing to grow, and if we do not watch out, we're going to have a massive housing shortage. All right? So this, in my opinion, it's a perfect location. It's on a four-lane highway. You're not going to build a single-family home on a four-lane highway. Nobody's going to live there. Currently, there's a dilapidated building, right? And I'm not sure if you've seen their project on the other side of the highway by Target, but it's beautiful. It's a very, very nice project. It is affordable. It is nice, attainable living, and it's what we need. Housing prices are through the roof. Interest rates, coupling that, makes it even harder. As he mentioned, the mortgage lock-in, all of us who have owned homes here, you can't sell it and move anywhere else. You're basically stuck where you are. So I am fully in favor of this. I think it's a perfect spot, and I think, I think it's going to be beautiful. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Stephanie, start the clock too. Is there anyone that wants to speak in opposition of the project? Please come forward. Anyone looking to speak in opposition of the project? Please state your name and where you live.
I'm David Causey. I live on Oak Grove Road. I've got four and a third acres adjoining this property. Of course, I'm going to oppose it because it's going to interfere with the serenity and quality of life that I have now with the trees surrounding my home. So now I'm going to be looking to my south and looking at the back of condos. I haven't heard, you know, speak of a buffer. I heard somebody say something about a 20-foot. In my opinion, that's not even near enough. I think we need to look at at least a 50-foot, and I think a fence down the property line, at least a five-foot fence, would keep people from wandering over onto my property line. Also, traffic's already been brought up. I watch daily as traffic goes to the traffic light at Jonesboro Road and backs up in front of my house. Traffic backs up from interstate to that red light, and on Mount Carmel and comes from McDonough to that red light. Also, they said for sale townhomes. Is that going to keep anybody from buying this unit and then renting it out? You'll still have rental property there. Thank you.
Is there anyone else that would like to come and speak in opposition? Did it close out the public hearing? I do have a couple of questions. What is the price point of the townhomes?
So we are targeting to be able to deliver these in the mid to upper 300s.
Okay. And what is the buffer? And where is... Are you saying the property, his property is behind this?
Yes, ma'am.
So what is...
So if you take a look at the site plan?
Okay.
I believe the property the gentleman was speaking of is here.
Okay.
Just north. They do have a 20-foot undisturbed or enhanced buffer as a part of the zoning conditions as well as on the site plan. So what we've found in the past rezonings is, when you require a fence and a buffer, that means they have to go in and tear out those trees that are already mature and put a new fence in, and then put trees that aren't so mature in their place. So staff prefers just an undisturbed buffer that is, you know, in a conservation that they just can't touch. But there is a buffer here, and I can't speak for the gentleman, but even on the other side, on his property line, there seems to be a nice row of mature trees as well.
Okay. So we're not intruding on his land at all?
No, ma'am.
Okay. And then the last question I have is about putting sprinkler systems in townhomes. Is that something that you all would consider?
Unfortunately, not. I mean, I think, but due to the way we construct these with a one-to-two-hour fire separation between the units, it's, number one, it's not necessary from a code standpoint. Number two, it drives up the cost significantly. And so I think what we have found is, you know, through not only our experience, but just research, is that in a townhome unit where you can easily evacuate, a fire separation is more than adequate. Now, if we, if these were four-level townhomes where you were having to come down many flights of stairs or something like that, that would be a different conversation, but I think in this configuration, that's not something that's necessary. And frankly, simply, because it's not necessary, it is simply just a cost driver for the resident.
Okay. Thank you. Any questions from the board?
I just had a comment, but you basically said that it won't impede with his property, because he said when he looks out, he'll just be seeing townhomes, but you're saying there are trees there.
Yes, ma'am. So it's a 20-foot...
And we're not going to touch those.
We, they can't touch the trees that are on their property line. So I'm assuming, and again, I'm not speaking for him, but even on his... but even on his part of the property, there's so many trees there. If he doesn't tear down any of his, and they're not allowed to tear down any of theirs, what is really a twenty-foot buffer on their side is much larger on the northern part of the property.
I just got a couple of comments because I'm familiar with the property to the east and Birch Creek that runs through there. The passive open space is primarily falls into the floodplain right there. That's concerning to me. The other concerning thing that I've stated before is the lack of green space. Density, this is where the density needs to be. It needs to be closer to interstate. But the given density is where are we gonna get the park space? Where is the green space between these different units? If you look back at the other, and I tore it out, but the one that had the apartments, which I'm not, don't wanna go down that, but it appears there's more green space that's available around that area for families to spend time outside playing, not on the concrete. And the question I also have is where are those units that we talk about, that we desire, that look differently, that are multi-level, even condos? I know y'all may not be interested in it, but condos is something that we don't have. And I'll tell you right now, I tell folks all the time, if I would've had one ten years ago, I'd be living in one because I was single at the time. And it would've been very fitting to the budget I had. So with that being said, that's the comments I have. I appreciate y'all's time, thank you.
So this is not the site plan. What is the site plan that we are, because this looked like it has?
Yes, ma'am. So he was referring to the older one, so I just went back. But this is the site plan.
Okay, okay.
These two.
Okay, all right. Okay, I got you. Commissioner Lewis?
Yeah, the only comment, I will say the Croft House, which you did on the west side, is probably the best, probably the only apartment complex I like in the whole county. So you did a great job over there on the west side of seventy-five, and especially with the commercial development as well. So kudos to that. My only comment is kind of in line with Commissioner Anglin, just hoping that we could have where the letter A is, if that could be some green space right there to the left of A. That's my only comment. I know I wasn't the commissioner that dealt with you, but it would be nice to see some green space within the middle of this project because I don't see an amenity area anywhere at all. Well, I do see a pool, but it looks very small. That's my only comment.
Yeah.
Can I respond?
Yes.
Okay. So I do want to point out a couple of things. One is, you know, we have a little over three acres in the passive open space. Our plan there is to cut in walking trails and to provide some of that outdoor recreational space. So that is, that is a significant amount of space to do that with. The second is, you know, again, this is a conceptual site plan. So as we go through the engineering process, it's our desire as well to create those spaces and as much as we can. So, you know, we will evaluate that as we go through the, you know, real nuts and bolts and engineering process and as we really dial it in. But I will say, you know, it may not look like it on the plan, but I mean, all of this, the green space in between even the units will create, you know, outdoor communal spaces in between units where people can recreate and people can enjoy that outdoor space. So the graphic representation probably doesn't show up quite as well because the dark units sort of jump out. But I think what you'll find is when we really go land-plan this and landscape this, there will be more green space than it probably appears on paper.
I just want to say, I have commented this really kind of middle of the stream, but I've had an opportunity to talk to staff and address some concerns that I may have had. And so they explained, and we got those squared away. I do want to say though, I don't know if we, because a homeowner suggested about people buying them and then renting them out. I think we could maybe request in the HOA that they can't allow but a certain number of units maybe to be rented out if that could be added as a condition, you know, in the HOA.
It is a condition already.
I believe it is a condition already, it's limited to ten percent.
Ten percent.
And we've agreed to that.
Okay.
It's condition seven.
Okay. With that being said, I would like to recommend the rezoning of this particular project for this development with all of the necessary conditions that staff has recommended.
A motion, is there a second?
Second.
A motion and a second. No further discussion, all in favor? All opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Stephanie, we have anyone signed up for public comment? Okay. Now, can I get a motion to approve the minutes for May twenty-ninth and May thirtieth? Got a motion, can I get a second?
Second.
All in favor? Motion carries. Upcoming meetings and event June twenty-seventh, twenty twenty-four. Call BOC joint meeting with cities, reference to SPOLO six at six-thirty PM. July ninth, twenty twenty-four, regular scheduled BOC meeting at nine AM. And that is it, meeting is adjourned, thank you.